Privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in the public gallery, it is assumed your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast. For more information, the policy is available on the Greater Shepparton City Council's website. Any apologies, councillors?
councillor Abdullah.
councillor Abdullah, thank you, councillor Givenetti. We have to accept that apology, so do I need, have a councillor to move, to accept the apology?
Received and leave be granted.
Thank you councillor Hazelman, do I have a seconda? Do you wish to speak to that?
No.
No, none? No one wishing to speak against that? All in favour of the, of the motion? Any declarations of a conflict of interest, councillors?
I'll declare a conflict of interest in, in, um, item eight point five, which is the appointment of, um, some committees of management, isn't it? One of the people being appointed.
Been noted, thank you councillor Hazelman.
Uh, seven point, uh...
Here we go, seven point two. Yes councillors, I'll declare a conflict of interest as well, on item seven point two, contract seventeen ten, provision of traffic management services, so when that item comes up for discussion, I will be asking our deputy mayor to step in and take over the meeting for that duration of that item. Any other conflicts? Our confirmation of minutes needs to be confirmed, obviously of the previous meeting, the recommendation is there on page number one, do I have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation? councillor Givenetti, do I have a seconda? councillor Patterson, councillor Givenetti, you wish to speak to that?
No, Mr Mayor.
councillor Patterson, no one wishing to speak against? For, all in favour? Councillors, on page two, item six point one, the chief executive officer, leave arrangements, there's a, a recommendation on page two, do I have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation as the motion?
I'll move the recommendation printed on page two with the agenda.
You? Do I have a seconda? councillor O'Keefe. councillor Hazelman.
I was mayor, it's a straightforward process, so don't need to speak to it.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe, no. Do I have anyone wishing to speak against the motion?
No.
No? Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? No, councillor Hazelman, any closing comments? None, all in favour? Against, motion carried. Item seven point one, on page four councillors, there is a recommendation, do I have a councillor wishing to move that as the motion, please? councillor Summer?
Move as stated on page four.
Seconda please? councillor Patterson? councillor Summer?
Oh, fairly straightforward housekeeping, uh, what it does, it is quite a significant contract though, it's, uh, four point four million dollars over three years, so that's an example of how, um, we need to maintain and develop our roads, we, um, deal with a relatively small rate base when you look at how many roads, bridges and drains we have, which is going to become more problematic with rate capping. So it's a good opportunity for a rather large contract to be put forward to the public in a transparent way.
Thank you councillor Summer, councillor Patterson?
Thank you.
Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? councillor Summer, any closing comments? None, all in favour? Motion carried. Item seven point two, on page seven, uh, there is a recommendation there, this is the item that I have declared a conflict, so deputy mayor O'Keefe, you can take over the reins.
Yeah. Um, item seven point two councillors, provision of traffic management services on page seven, is there a councillor who would move the recommendation as printed in the agenda as the motion?
I'll move the recommendation printed on page seven of the agenda.
Thank you councillor Hazelman, uh, do I have a councillor to second the motion?
I'll second it, madam deputy mayor.
Thank you councillor Patterson, uh, councillor Hazelman, do you wish to speak to the motion?
It's very straightforward, um, awarding of, um, of contract, uh, it's a, it's a panel of suppliers who will be appointed for works that are necessary for the council to engage from time to time, it's a very, uh, normal process for the council to adopt.
Thank you councillor Hazelman, councillor, councillor Patterson, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, I do, it's, uh, it's become more important, this position of O H and S the way it is, um, there's a panel of three that's been selected, two are definitely locals and I presume my pile would be also local, so it's great to see the locals represented in our, our contract awarding.
Great, thank you, thank you so much. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Okay, so we're all, um, closing, any closing comments? So we'll put to a vote, all those in favour? Against the motion? Motion carried.
Good job, keep going.
Now ask the mayor, do you need to come back, please?
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Very well, very well handled. Item seven point three, councillors on page ten, there's a recommendation in regard to the construction of the Marupna Recreation Reserve main oval lighting. Do I have a councillor wishing to move the motion in respect to that?
I'll move the motion as printed on page ten, thank you.
councillor Summer, a seconda please?
I can second the motion.
councillor O'Keefe? Good, councillor Summer?
Uh, this is an example of council working very well with the community, uh, we had budgeted for four towers with two hundred lux lights, but, uh, the cricket club have decided that they wanted some brighter lights so that they can attract more high level day and night cricket events, and they are actually going to fund the difference, so for no cost to council, we end up with a fantastic facility, and that can, um, have a large economic flow on to the rest of the community when visitors come here for sporting events, we've seen that time and again, and we do like to position ourselves as the regional sporting capital of Victoria, so well done to staff and to the cricket club for this, um, investment.
Thank you councillor Summer, councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
I covered that well, thank you.
Good, any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to comment, um, it is becoming a very, very good facility over there with Deacon Reserve attracting, um, AFL, that's very important, we have somewhere else that we can take our major sporting events to, and, and Rooton's, um, heading down that path, um, those lights will be magnificent for football and cricket during the winter and summer months.
Good, thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to comment for or against? None, councillor Summer, any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Good, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item seven point four, Margaret Street, detour petition requesting seal. There's a recommendation on page fourteen councillors, any councillor wishing to move that as the motion? councillor O'Keefe, thank you, do I have a seconda please? councillor Sutton, councillor O'Keefe?
I think that's all pretty straightforward, I think.
Pretty straightforward, okay. councillor Sutton, would you like to comment?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Councillor wishing to speak for the motion?
Um, yes, I'd just like to comment, I think it's very important we monitor this, um, if that dust is as bad as some people think, we should be doing something about it, uh, indications are that it's not probably as bad as we thought with the amount of traffic that gets down there, but I would, um, I know personally I'll be having a look during the summer months to see, if it is getting bad, we do need to do something there, but we need to get that balance right, but, um, you know, do appreciate these people going to the, the extent of putting, uh, petition together, have taken notice of it, and I'm sure council officers will be having some inspections during the, the summer months as will I and most other councils when they're open to detour, which hopefully will be reasonably.
Yeah, it will be, thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against the motion? None, councillor O'Keefe, any closing comments? All in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item seven point five, councillors, we have a, a recommendation on page twenty, do I have a councillor wishing to move that as the motion? councillor Givenetti? Have a seconda?
I think councillor Oriswari got in early there councillor Hazelman.
I heard him, and his hand went up in the air. councillor Givenetti, would you wish to speak to the motion?
This is obviously one of our larger contracts that we're going to be awarding, uh, over the next several months, uh, contract ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and six, uh, sorry, ten million seven hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars, just not, uh, ten, ninety percent off it.
Left a couple of zeros, yes.
Um, this is stage three of the Cosgrove, um, or tip site, um, I know there is another word for it, but, uh, tip site for the moment, uh, it's a process that we have to follow, um, our, uh, site, uh, site two is filling up and it's a requirement now that we need to, um, expand, and if we look at like becoming a reasonable waste hub, um, this will certainly be needed, so I think it's, uh, it's a, uh, it's a, uh, a contract that we have to undertake, and I believe through council offices that there has been a, uh, a saving of some three million dollars from the original estimates, uh, which is, um, significant amount.
Thank you councillor Givenetti, councillor Oriswari?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion?
Yes.
councillor Summer?
I just wanted to make a point that waste management is complicated and it is expensive, especially for councils, uh, waste, um, the sustainability, Victoria levy is about thirty percent of landfill fees going directly to the state, uh, when people drop things off at the tip, it is expensive, but that's because of a lot of different, um, external reasons, not necessarily councillors being greedy to get more money out of the tip site, that's not exactly true at all, so I would just like to recommend people keep recycling so that we don't have to fill that space up as quickly as anticipated and we could potentially save more money.
councillor Summer? Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against the motion? No, councillor Givenetti, any closing comments? Been said, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item eight point one was on page twenty-eight, there's a motion there in regard to our annual review municipal health and wellbeing action plan for two thousand fifteen sixteen, any councillor wishing to move the recommendation as the motion? councillor Summer?
As printed on page twenty-eight.
You, do I have a seconda? councillor Summer?
May.
I mean councillor O'Keefe, sorry. councillor Summer?
Uh, just, this is the annual review, we've had an exemption from the minister so we don't have to do a four-year plan, it's, um, an ongoing working review of what we've done in terms of health and wellbeing in, in our council, and there's been a lot of goals kicked, I think the last councillor on that committee was former councillor Kevin Ryan, and he was quite vocal about issues such as smoking, obesity and homelessness, so they cover a broad scope of what it means to be healthy. That might be a cue to stop talking, I was going to talk about the lead stakeholders, but, uh, it's all self-explanatory, and it does show again that we're more than roads, rates and rubbish.
Thank you councillor Summer, councillor O'Keefe? All good, any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? None, any councillor wishing to add any further comments in regard to speaking to the motion? None, okay, councillor Summer, any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All good, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item eight point two councillors, on page thirty-three, the agenda, the Boulevard and Gulf Estates neighbourhood plan, any councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to that? councillor Summer? A seconda please? councillor Patterson? councillor Summer?
This is, uh, more examples of the good work that we do with, um, smaller communities, it's one of four neighbourhood plans that we've done, and that is also including locality plans like small towns, and we'll get to that in the next item, but, um, they have, the people involved in this have been, um, there's, there's been so many people involved in this, and it's a very valuable contribution, it means that each locality can actually grow and evolve in the way that they seem fit, there's, um, a bit of budget attached to this too, which is great, so if you get involved, there's, um, yeah, it pays to get involved, now, anyone who does want to look at developing a locality plan for themselves can contact council for more information on how they can do that, so, um, as you can see in the report, there's a long list of suggestions and I'll be looking forward to whatever comes out of that, but yes, increasing social capital by the people straight from the coalface.
Good, thank you councillor Summer, councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate, good people, the Boulevard and Gulf, um, Estates to get himself together, identify what they need and how they can work together with council and where, where, uh, their position will help them achieve their goals.
Thank you councillor Patterson, any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? councillor Sutton, first, sorry councillor Oriswari?
I'd just like to say that it's nice to see a city part, a city part of Shepparton actually compete and complete a neighbourhood plan as well as the small towns.
Thank you councillor Sutton, councillor Oriswari?
Uh, thanks, Mr Mayor, the thing that impressed me the most was how such a relatively small cross-section of the community can actually come up with such a lo, long list of achievable outcome, well, a long list of outcomes which a majority would be achievable, but also to start off with something so simple as the installation of a drinking fountain, but also to advocate and support the Marupna bypass, uh, and things of the nature where to advocate for improved bus coverage within estates, to me, that's a reflection of the fact that there's a lot of thinking people out there based upon a lot of common sense within their own particular part of the community that they come from.
Thank you councillor, councillor Summer, would you like any closing comments? All in favour of the motion councillors? Against, motion carried. Item eight point three, on page forty councillors, there's a recommendation there, would councillor wish to move that as the motion? Oriswari, do I have a seconda?
Mr Mayor.
councillor Oriswari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, excuse me, this agenda item really dovetails into the previous item but on a more global basis, and is the overarching rationale for the community plan. The statistics spec largely for themselves and the community plan is all about people from within each of the sixteen endorsed community plan locations who have demonstrated passion and enthusiasm to improve their own immediate area by way of achievable outcomes. There are many outcomes sought from across the breadth of the community in the various community plans, they have one common characteristic, and that is the community members are volunteers, they wish to evaluate the wellbeing of the community in which the plans are formulated and developed. Essentially, it's about developing relationships between council and committees to pursue funding grants from available sources, whether that be local council, state government, or even non-government agencies.
Thank you, councillor Oriswari, councillor Summer?
Uh, yes, we've got a list here of the sixteen different localities that we've been working very closely with, and they've all, um, had their annual review and updated all their information, and we get to see what they've achieved and what's yet to be achieved, there was no cost to the review, but, uh, the total budget allocation is about seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that's three hundred and thirty thousand of capital work, so again, it, it really does pay to get involved, and sometimes the communities of the lower socio-demographic are the hardest to get on board, but they're the ones who need it most, that sense of community, and I do hope there's some champions out there willing to call council and ask to have a go, and really just create the kind of community that we all wish for.
Thank you councillor Summer, any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? councillor Oriswari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Said enough, you think? Thank you. All in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item eight point four councillors, on page forty-seven, there's a recommendation there in regard to the Greater Shepparton Volunteer Strategy and Action Plan, two thousand fourteen, two thousand eighteen, year two, year two update. councillor Sutton, would you like to move that? Do I have a seconda please, councillor Oriswari? councillor Sutton?
Um, yes, I don't know what we do without our volunteers, our volunteers are the lifeblood of our cities, and without them, we wouldn't do half the work that we've got to do, um, I'd just like to thank them very much for all their efforts and, um, oh yeah, just thank you.
Good, thank you councillor Sutton, councillor Oriswari?
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. The agenda item highlights the critical element behind this strategy, and that is that volunteering is an essential community resource which promotes active citizenship and social inclusion, but for mine, effectively, the strategy's key priority is a great way to meet people.
Good, thank you councillor Oriswari, any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? That being said, councillor Sutton, any closing comments? No? Good, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Next item, councillor Hazelman, I think you've declared a conflict.
Deputy mayor, I did declare a conflict of interest in this matter in that I'm being appointed, uh, not in a council...
Well, not yet councillor Hazelman.
Well, that's the recommendation they've adopted, uh, not as a council representative, but as a community representative in this matter.
Okay councillors, we have a, a recommendation on page fifty-one and fifty-two, do I have a councillor wishing to move that recommendation as the motion? councillor Givenetti? Seconda please? councillor Patterson? councillor Givenetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, we're just following on from councillor Oriswari, um, I think that, um, we need to thank all of the, um, the members of these various committees for their voluntary involvement, um, in, um, looking after their facilities in their, uh, in their hometown, I think again, it's a, a, a great conduit between the community and council, um, and, uh, these committees advise us, um, on a regular basis as to what the requirements of their community facilities are.
Thank you councillor, councillor Patterson?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to make special mention of Mr Barry Rutherford who's actually resigned, uh, it's great the amount of work all these volunteers do, but I think Mr Rutherford sold his farm liquid and shifting away, uh, it should be noted that, um, the target volunteers, they do a terrific job, and I wish him all the best, and thank you, thank him very much for his significant input to the Mbartha community of years.
Thank you, any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Councillor wishing to speak for the motion? I just want to add my personal comments and reiterate what councillor Patterson and councillor Givenetti have said, um, once again, the people who give up their time and devote their efforts to being on these committees, uh, I just think it should be highly commended without these people, these committee organisations don't run, so we should really appreciate their efforts and congratulate them. That said, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Councillors, item number eight point, oh sorry councillor Hazelman, you can come back, you were, you're successful, yes. Item eight point six, on page fifty-seven, do I have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation as the motion? councillor Summer? Seconda please? councillor Givenetti? Just beat you. councillor Summer?
Uh, well, this is following on from what we were talking about before with community plans, this one is specific to, to Lamber, uh, they have a very engaged steering committee, and, um, they've consulted well with the residents, uh, so we have the latest, and one thing I will mention is that, it says here that there's a surplus of three thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, and that can be used for printing and promotion, but I would like staff to consider perhaps putting that towards low hanging fruit in the plan, such as community gardens, a community notice board, or even promoting business around the town.
Thank you councillor Summer, councillor Givenetti?
Um, just reiterating what councillor Summer has, has already said, I've had the opportunity to go out to Lamber on a number of occasions and meet with the community out there, I think they're doing a fantastic job, they really are. They really are committed to their community plan, it's interesting that the majority of the, uh, community out there actually know what the community plan is and what it's all about, and I think it's up to us to ensure that we, uh, resource them with adequate, uh, funds to be able to undertake, uh, the works that they require as soon as we possibly can.
councillor Givenetti? councillor Patterson?
Uh, councillor Givenetti said it all, thank you.
Councillor wishing to speak against the motion? None, anyone wishing to speak for the motion? None, okay, good, councillor Givenetti? Any closing comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item eight point seven, on page sixty-two, Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee membership, do I have a councillor wishing to move that recommendation as the motion, please? councillor Summer? Seconda please? councillor O'Keefe, councillor Summer, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thanks, I'll just get my page, um, so we have some new nominations for the Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee, which is terrific, I sat on that committee probably about four years ago, and have seen it grow just in leaps and bounds, uh, they also have a Friends of the Women's Charter, who I believe is reaching up to about over fifty members, so they do, um, all sorts of events through the year and engage with the community, and their values are quite simple, if I can find them, it's engaged, um, oh, so this is just the membership, sorry, we'll go on to the, what they do in the next one, but as far as the memberships go, I'm sure they'll have a great time, it's a terrific committee, and I do encourage others who are interested in leadership in women, women's gender to think about getting involved.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe?
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor, I think this is great acknowledgement of the leadership that we see in women in our community, and to acknowledge that, you know, the contribution they do make is an important thing, and fully support this, thank you.
Good, thank you councillor, any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? None, any councillor wishing to add further comments for the motion? None, okay, councillor Summer, any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item eight point eight, we have the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Action Plan, on page sixty-five, councillors wishing to move this as a motion? councillor Summer again? Councillors seconding the motion? councillor O'Keefe? councillor Summer?
Following on from the last, um, motion where we attracted new members, this is sort of just to talk about what it is that they actually do, this is their action plan, they've got three values which, uh, feature strongly in everything they do, which is gender equity, diversity and active citizenship, so, um, we've seen them infiltrate the community and really get some great results, so, well done, Women's Charter Alliance Committee.
Right.
I wasn't going to move it.
councillor O'Keefe, would you like? Oh, you're up, nothing good, anyone wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? councillor Summer? No expansion in your infiltration? No? None? Thank you, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item eight point eight, oh, that was item eight point out. And nine point one, page sixty-eight, our November two thousand sixteen, uh, monthly financial report, do I have a councillor wishing to move this recommendation as a motion? councillor Oriswari, did I see your hand, oh, I didn't, no, I didn't, no, I didn't.
I thought just for something different, somebody else might want to raise it, but if nobody else will, I will.
I only if you want to, and you do want to, thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Orasvari?
thank you, Mr Mayor. As has become a custom, I invite Mr Titezel to give us an overview, if he would, please.
Mr Titezel? You happy to do that?
thanks, Mr Mayor. And free to the councillors. I'll talk to the attachment to the report which commences on page number now, anyway, three hundred and something. The operating performance, financial health and financial obligations sections of that report are all indicating that we're about where we would expect at this time of year. We are forecasting at this stage, to do with operating performance, that we will get hit or suffer a bit of a hit with some competitive action in the waste area with some other landfills in the north-east region of the state. And our user fees and charges for that are down. We're expecting that we won't be able to pick all of that up by the end of the financial year and that will have an impact of close to a million dollars, we think, at this stage. But we've got a report coming to council in February that will address the actions that we will take to try and pick that up. Financial health is looking good. We're forecasting that we'll be ahead of budget by the end of the financial year, so our liquidity position is good. And borrowings will track as expected through the year. You'll see on the traffic light report on page three hundred and sixty-seven that the user charges are showing unfavourable in terms of the full year forecast, although they're favourable year to date. Materials and consumables is the other area that we're paying attention to at the moment and they're tracking five hundred above budget, five hundred thousand above budget at this point in time. And that's largely to do with some increased legal expenses, some additional consultants around some planning studies and some occupational health and safety improvements that we've implemented through the first half of this financial year. Capital expenditure is tracking a little bit behind where we would like it at this point in time. A lot of that is due to the weather conditions that we experienced for the large part of the first half of this financial year and we're hoping that we can pick a lot of that up through the second half with the letting of some of the contracts, one of which you've seen tonight, which is the Cosgrove Three contract, which is a fairly large piece of expenditure to be delivered in the second half of this financial year.
Councillor Hazelman, do you wish to add any comments?
no, I have to be.
Councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Orasvari, any closing comments? All in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Item 9.2. Page seventy-one of our agendas. Contract 1718, Provision of Municipal Valuation Services 2018 and 2020.
here, I'll move the recommendation printed on page seventy-one?
You, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
Patterson? Councillor?
yes, Mr Mayor, there's a statutory requirement that every two years we undertake a valuation across the municipality for the purposes of both establishing a rate and generating income for the municipality. And to do that, it's an independent valuation. LG Valuation Services have performed this function with the council previously. And I do note that under the terms of this contract, there are options for them to do both 2018, 2020, but also the potential for contract extensions for 2022 and 2024. There's sorts of dates that most of us in the room won't be thinking too much about what the valuation's going to be, but it's good, solid planning that this is put in place now and is in place over the longer term to ensure that the service being provided is both effective and appropriate.
Councillor Patterson?
ah, yes, this is a unique opportunity for us to value. The value is really, LNG are one of the largest valuation companies in Victoria and do a lot of council work right around the state, so full confidence in them.
Good, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Summer?
I wanted to make note that the cost of these valuations is significantly lower than if you were going to go out and get your property valued independently. And I also want to mention that ratepayers do have a right to contest the valuation. As you can see here, fifty-five dollars per assessment for objections, but ratepayers also need to be mindful that their CIV may actually go up or down depending on what the valuer finds. But yes, it's very much a non-exact science because we can't spend the same amount of time looking at every ratepayer's property in the detail they may perhaps like, unless of course it's brought to our attention that there might be substantial changes.
Thank you councillor Summer. Any councillor wishing to speak against or for the motion? None? Councillor Hazelman? Nothing? All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item 9.3, there is a recommendation, councillors on page seventy-four, for our councillor representation on committees. And seventy-five and seventy-six. Now, are we, is there some change? Just want to draw to your attention, councillors, there has been some slight
are you, Mr Mayor, are these last minute changes?
not at all councillor Orasvari.
they had an hour ago.
short straw changes.
They were well considered changes councillor Orasvari. May I just draw your attention, councillors, on page seventy-four? We have the committee, the Goldburn Broken Greenhouse Alliance. We have councillor Givenetti, as printed in your agendas. In fact, that is now councillor Summer. Page seventy-five, we have the Heritage Advisory Committee. We have councillor Abdullah and councillor O'Keefe, it is now councillor Abdullah only. Also on the same page, seventy-five, halfway down the page, we have the Positive Aging Advisory Committee. We had councillor Patterson. And we have councillor Orasvari. Thank you councillor Orasvari. And on page seventy-six, the last committee listed is the Victorian Local Government Association. There is councillor O'Keefe printed, it is now councillor Summer. So we have made a note of those changes. Thank you councillors. Do I have a councillor wishing to move this recommendation as a motion? Councillor Givenetti? Second, please. Councillor Hazelman? Councillor Givenetti?
yes, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation on page seventy-four with the amendments that we've, as we've just mentioned. I think it's been an interesting process for us all to go through, particularly some of us new councillors who did probably initially have the majority of the committees, but that has now been I wouldn't say too much councillor Orasvari, if you have a look at your numbers. But I think all councillors are looking forward to the challenge it is for the next twelve months
indeed.
in working with these local committees.
the table reflects a diverse range of committees and activities there and councillors have attempted to spread themselves across all of that to get a relatively even workload. But at regular times during the year, back on this agenda, there'll be various reports will come back from these committees and we'll look forward to seeing what those reports contain.
Well, indeed, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Summer?
yes, some of these changes may be made under duress, but I just wanted to thank councillor Givenetti for allowing me the swap to get back on to the Goldburn Broken Greenhouse Alliance Committee. Because when I was talking before about the SV funds that come from the landfill, they're finally opening some of that up and there's a pitch to government that we are going to actually move forward with a procurement that's across Shires to try and encourage electric vehicle use. So I'd really like to continue that project and just to be involved and see how exciting it is that people are looking at alternative modes of transport. And it is a really good group, very friendly. Sad to be leaving the DAK, but yeah, I think it's a great opportunity to get further involved in joint collaborations.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against this motion?
I would just like to make a comment, please. It seems like in turn, you go, we went into caretaker period, a lot of us have earned these committees for a few years now and enjoy working and progressing the committee. And it seems so long ago that we had to stop and now we can get back into it and get moving. It does seem more than two months ago.
Good, thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to comment for or against? No? Councillor Givenetti?
ah, no, Mr Mayor.
No, no closing comments? All in favour? Motion carried. Item 9.4, councillors. Contracts awarded under delegation and status of contracts advertised and yet to be awarded November 2016. There's a recommendation on page eighty-three. Do we have?
all recommendations, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Hazelman, do we have a second? Councillor Orasvari? Councillor Hazelman?
each month, there's contracts that are advertised here or published in the agenda here and they're either awarded under an officer's delegation or they're a contract that's been advertised and yet to be awarded. And a couple of these, they mentioned the Municipal Valuation Service, we just dealt with a few moments ago, the Root Recreation Reserve Main Oval Lighting, similarly dealt with, and there's probably others in here. But I think it's a good process to publish these on a monthly basis, that it provides information to the public and also in a indirect way, and probably information to some of the people who are participating on where they're progressing through the system.
Hazelman?
Mr Hazelman, councillor Hazelman has got it in one.
Good. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Hazelman? All in favour? Against? Carried. Item 10.1, councillors, on page eighty-seven. Actually, the recommendation is on page eighty-eight. In regard to the Greater Shepparton Movement and Place Strategy Draft Challenges and Opportunities Paper. Do I have a councillor, councillor Summer? Yes, thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Orasvari? Councillor Summer?
I'm more than happy to support this opportunities paper. We sort of have this culture in Shepparton where we get in our car and drive around the corner, even if it's five minutes away, and don't consider other modes of transport that could potentially be not only healthier for the human body, because we are in the middle of a public epidemic of obesity in this region, but also stimulate foot traffic, which could in turn stimulate the economy. So this is a very, very broad way of looking at things that could potentially revolutionise the way we look at travel. And a lot of that is to do with car parking. Ratepayers will be pretty happy that that will well and truly be part of this discussion. We'll be looking at how to increase public transport, especially considering our aging population and our low demographics. We'll be trying to alleviate pressure on the road network and just reduce the higher level of car commuters. Understandably, many of those car commuters are from small towns and we do have an urban sprawl. But if we can tackle the CBD and encourage walking and cycling and also lobby for the freight system up to Queensland and the bypass, then we're well on a good track to deliver a healthier community. So yes, please, give us any feedback you have in regards to anything to do with transport and we will be looking at it in due course.
Thank you councillor Orasvari.
thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, in my, I suppose, preparation or research, it's interesting that every major city or even rural city has got its own movement and place strategy. And ultimately aims like a people-friendly city, improving conditions for pedestrians, cyclists and those using public transport. It should strive to achieve the right balance for accommodating these priority users, which dovetails into what councillor Summer said, whilst also addressing the needs for parking, loading and car accessibility. Further, it's also effectively a strategic document. And of particular relevance at the moment is the CBD ML strategy outcomes that we would like to get started on. And it also involves a degree of environmental sensitivity and progressive thinking and how we can progress our city along the lines of these strategies.
Good, thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer, any closing comments? Thank you, all in favour of the motion? Motion carried. Item 10.2, Cusson Park Advisory Committee, Terms of Reference, on page ninety-five, councillors, there is a recommendation. Do I have a councillor wishing to move that as a motion? Givenetti? A second, please. Councillor Sutton? Givenetti?
thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to move the recommendation on page ninety-five in relation to the advisory committee terms of reference. We had the opportunity to visit Cusson Park in Ventura during our whistle-stop tour of the city and I commend those volunteers from that group for the fantastic work they're doing in that particular area. The terms of reference give them a clear guideline as to what they can do with council and I think gives council direction to work with them as well.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Sutton, would you like some comments? Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Givenetti? Any? All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Page ninety-eight, still on Cusson Park, we have the Cusson Park Advisory Committee Appointment of Members, item 10.3. Do I have a councillor wishing to move any motion? Councillor O'Keefe? Move the motion as printed on page ninety-eight? Correct?
and ninety-nine.
And ninety-nine, correct. Councillors, second, please. Councillor Summer? Councillor O'Keefe? Anyone want to speak to the motion? No? Councillor Summer? Anyone wishing to speak against this motion? None? For the motion? Good, okay. Councillor O'Keefe, any closing comments? None? All in favour of appointing the recommended people? Yes, all in favour? Against? Motion carried. Congratulations. Item 10.4, on page one hundred and four and one hundred and five? Many other pages?
to one hundred and nine.
To up to one hundred and nine. There's a recommendation there councillors. Do we have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation as a motion?
I'll second it.
yes, I'll move that.
And second, councillor Givenetti? Councillor Patterson?
ah, yes, former councillor Roman was very passionate about lack of commercial property in Ventura. We have a business here that's struggling to find somewhere to operate from. And he has put an application in and it's great to be able to move for them. The danger of not having enough industrial land is that these businesses will go somewhere else, which is the last thing we want. There was a couple of objectives and I appreciate that, but it is basically going to be an industrial area anyway, which it is now situated across from an industrial site. So yes, hopefully it's been a bit of a battle to get this permit done. But now we can get up and running, it'll get through tonight and he can start his business and keep going.
Good, thank you councillor. Councillor Givenetti?
thank you, Mr Mayor. This application is a permitted use in a farming zone. As councillor Patterson has mentioned before, this whole area is looking at being rezoned to industrial. So this application fits with the permitted use. In relation to the objections that were received, I think the planning conditions that have been placed on this particular site are more than adequate and they should appease the objectives significantly, I believe.
Thank you. Any councillors wishing to speak against this motion? Councillor Summer?
I'd like to speak against the motion for the simple fact that it's in an investigation-
Um, I'd like to speak against the motion for the simple fact that it's in an investigation area. Is that correct? Just point of clarification. So it's in an investigation area. And it actually states that, uh, the planning scheme seeks to avoid incremental approvals and development in identified investigations area until it's all completed and assessed and resolved future land opportunities, constraints, land use, development, subdivision, all of that. So basically we're going against our own policy. Now I'm all for more industrial land in Tura, we know that that is needed. Uh, Tura is a thriving small town, it was built on the back of industry in that area, but we do need to be confident that we're putting industry in the right place. So during my last term, I saw other applications denied because they were in an investigation area zone, so which is it? I'm trying to get this council to have some kind of consistency in their approach here. So, um, at this present time, it seems to me that it'll go against the planning scheme, which means it would probably hold up if it was taken to VCAT. And I tend to agree with some of the objectors that it does preempt zoning of industrial land before we've even finished the process. So because it's an investigation area, I am objecting.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion?
Uh, yes Mister Mayor.
Councillor Hazelman?
Look, in, um, in looking at this issue, I'm, I'm mindful of the, of the number of factors. One is that the land is currently within the farming zone. And as such, it's permitted use in that zone. The land is also in an area that's being looked at as an investigation area, um, by the industrial strategy that's been adopted by council some, almost six years ago now, or five and a half years ago now. And given that, um, there is a lack of supply of industrially zoned land in Tura, as others have said. And it clearly obvious that into the future, the land has been identified as future industrial land. So I don't see any conflict at all between the, the fact that it isn't in, uh, investigation area. It is already, even without the investigation area, it would be a permit use in the, in the farm, farming zone. I think it's also interesting the, and, um, I'm mindful of the fact that the, the applicant has indicated, um, in writing that they have no intention to seek a rezoning of the land. They'll let those natural causes, um, take, take effect. So I think it's a, it's a good outcome, um, but I'm also aware that there are objectors, um, and their needs and concerns need to be taken into account. Hence there is a very detailed, um, set of conditions attached to the planning permit, which would be the case with all, um, circumstances where council is approving a planning application specific to the particular site. And hopefully those, um, conditions that have been applied will, um, satisfy the objectives, although I note there was a mediation session and no objections were withdrawn. So potentially this will go to another place for, for other determination. But hopefully I'm confident that the conditions that have been applied here will be upheld at that other place.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Councillor Orisvari?
Thanks Mister Mayor. At the outset let me state that I support business attraction and development, wherever it may be in the municipality. The question though is at what cost? This agenda item is a case in point. The recommendation itself is pretty benign in the sense that it's a contracted contractor's depot in a farming zone, which by all councils are permitted use because in fact it's not a specified exclusion. There's always been a call for more industrial land in Tura and I acknowledge councillor Ryan's presence here tonight. He was very, uh, vocal, very passionate about the need and desire for this to occur. And I support that. When industry and residential dwellings however come into close proximity, there will always be issues. The landowner who purchased his residential property as a lifestyle property, understandably after almost thirty years of adjoining amenity is confronted with a development which promises to upset what he considers an idyllic lifestyle, the accepted order of things from his perspective and particularly so when the area behind him is farmland. I understand and appreciate the very things that the objectors have raised at mediation and continue to object to to this very day and well understand their lack of confidence or scepticism. In fact, it should permit an issue, in fact, should a permit issue that conditions imposed on the permit, A, have real teeth and B, more importantly, will be enforced effectively. It's one thing to stipulate conditions, it's an entirely different proposition to enforce them. The applicant, and I stand to be corrected on this, has the same business at another location, but presumably is relocating here for the purpose of expansion. Anecdotally, the issues of dust, noise, truck movements are ever-present issues at the current locality, nothing suggests to me that miraculously they will abide at the proposed new location. Presumably these same conditions where expressed concerns for residents at the current locality are not unreasonable ones for the objectors to be concerned about. It would appear that the area that proposed development in the consult report states that Cusson Street is overwhelmingly industrial, based upon that in the northern section across Cusson Street is a council works depot and a small hobby farm that includes crop paddocks and a house close to Cusson Street. East, there's a vet clinic, transport depot and residences which all face onto Ross Street, but are separated from the investigation area by the Golden Murray Water Channel Reserve. South, there are residences and a small hobby farm that includes a cropped paddock which faces onto Hogan Street and are separated from the investigation area by the Golden Murray Water Channel Reserve. And to the west, a small hobby farm containing a dwelling that is accessed from Hogan Street. In short, by illustration, there is a multitude of different uses within this area and the rationale is that this use is consistent with a use that is already in existence of a potentially council depot and numerous other businesses. However, I would suggest that none of the existing uses are quite
Time councillor Orisvari?
Thank you Mister Mayor.
Thank you. All in agreement councillors? Yes, continue.
Thank you. That none of the existing uses are quite in the same vein as what the current applicant is proposing. The test for the success of this application is whether the object, objectors have confidence in the permit and that the appropriate conditions to ensure the current level of amenity can be maintained on adjoining land. In short, effectively a leap of faith and a trust in the system. I think that amenity is a very subjective thing. But for one, I can relate to it and I note that it is not a defined use in a farm zone, but by the same token is a use more akin to a true industrial area where should, there should be numerous businesses conducting like type businesses and which are not enroaching on farms and residential dwellings and on amenity. I do not support the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Orisvari. Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Against? And councillor Patterson?
Uh, yes, I'd like to. Closing comments. Thank you. Uh, sometimes you just have to have a look. And most of us councillors had a look on our bus trip. You drive down there and, and you can see that it should be an industrial, uh, area. Half of, in one side of the road is completely industrial already, has been for donkey's age. There is a small development down the end as councillor Orisvari, uh, described. Uh, there is vet, there is long grass, it is not, um, as far as I'm concerned, it is open land. Um, it is a farming overlay at present. If a business can't set up in a place like that, God help us where we're going. Um, it reeks of a place where a business should be, as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, if we get to the stage where we, we stop people investing, building businesses, trying to set up jobs for other people in the town, like this will happen if we can't allow that to go. Um, I really have, I really would struggle for where we'll have a future in Tura if we can't allow places like this to start a business, run a business, make a dollar for themselves and employ a lot of people.
Thank you councillor Patterson. That being said, all councillors in favour of the motion? Against?
Division please Mister Mayor.
Division? All councillors in favour? In favour? Councillor Patterson? Councillor O'Keefe? Councillor Adam? Councillor Hazelman? Councillor Jevanetti? Councillor Sutton? Yes? Councillors against? Councillor Summer and councillor Orisvari? Motion carried. Item ten point five councillors. River, uh, Draft River Connect Strategic Plan Community Consultation. There is a recommendation on page one twenty-two. Do I have a councillor wishing to move that recommendation as a motion?
I'll move that recommendation.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Do I have a seconder please? Councillor Summer?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Councillor Patterson?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, this is Chair of Vaughan, Chair of River Connect. Uh, this is a very important document we're putting out for the next five years. Uh, it's a way forward for the organisation and the organisation is getting bigger, we're better accepted. It's all about taking the river back to people and people coming back to the river. Um, I'd like to make special mention of Helen Murdock from the CMA who, um, has done a lot of work, most of the work on this particular document. We've, um, unfortunately gone through a change of staff and, um, Helen has put, put her hand up and, um, did a great job of the strategy. It, uh, it's pretty exciting what we're going to aim for in the next five years and I'd encourage people to have a read of it when it goes out for consultation on the thirteenth of February. And, uh, hopefully they can get all the discussion points back into us by the twenty-seventh of March. So, uh, highly recommended, a good reading and, um, it's a future where we'll have to take the river strategy.
Good, thank you councillor. Councillor Summer?
Yeah, um, I'm new to this committee, but we've already had our first meeting and that was held outside over at the Shepherdern Weir, which was great. Um, the river's right there, it's right on our doorstep, like literally. If you turned a corner, you could see it from even where we're sitting right now and it is amazing. It's got all sorts of animals, uh, birds, all of it. Um, there's opportunities to go in kayaks and canoe, there's opportunities to go on tours for sugar gliders. There's opportunities to really engage and this, this committee's all about that. Looking especially to get the young ones involved so that we can break that cycle of just pretending the river's not there, because it's amazing.
Thank you councillor Summer. Councillors wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Patterson, any closing comments?
No, it's all been said.
All being said, good, thank you. All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, page one twenty-nine, the parliamentary inquiry into community energy projects. There's a recommendation there on page one twenty-nine. Do I have a councillor wishing to move that as the motion? Councillor Summer?
Message printed on one twenty-nine.
Seconder please. Councillor Sutton? Councillor Summer?
Uh, quite simply, we were made aware of an inquiry into community energy project, projects and we've made a submission that hasn't quite been endorsed until now, hopefully. But, uh, they were seeking information on how to better, um, better frame the legislation so that more people can take up opportunities in green energy. And we've had a few suggestions which will hopefully make it easier for our community if they decide to act on those. The only small criticism is that we probably didn't consult as far as I would have potentially liked to. But at the same time, but at the same time, we were time limited, so that's, I'm happy to endorse it.
Thank you councillor Sutton. Good. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? And for the motion? And councillor Summer?
Thank you Mister Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item ten point seven. Recommendation councillors on page one thirty-three in regard to a planning permit application, two oh one six dash two nine nine, application to sell packaged liquor. So, uh, do I have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation as the motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Jevanetti? Councillor Patterson, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, it's all been said about this. Basically, um, it is a high-profile area, uh, on the corner and, uh, Coles have applied for a permit, as in the, is it right to have a outlet alcohol takeaway outlet there? Um, basically, I firmly believe all the planning restrictions are in there will potentially overcome any problem that there is. There's concerns that people will walk out of there with alcohol and open it and drink it. That is an offence, it doesn't happen anywhere else that I've seen around. I live next door to a Coles or all worse in Rootna and that was never a problem there. Um, I can't see how if we were to knock it back, VCAT certainly wouldn't support our, our decision, I believe. As I've made it clear in a couple of, um, a couple of cases that they've actually commented on. Um, social, um, issues are a concern to them. They work solely on planning permits and legislation have to work with. Um, so I, I'm confident that there will be no issue. There is plenty of outlets for alcohol in this, in the town now. Another one's not going to make any difference, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, it becomes very much a financial decision of theirs. Um, there is lots of, um, of notes made there that, you know, they're not to display it out front etcetera. And, uh, yes, I, I move this motion.
You support the motion. Thank you councillor Patterson. Um, councillor Jevanetti?
Uh, well, similar to councillor Patterson, Mister Mayor. Um, I think we all have some concerns about the social side of what could, um, possibly occur with a, uh, an alcohol, uh, selling venue right near the, um, um, the bus terminal. Um, I think what, uh, staff have done is good in so much as the hours of operation have been limited to less than what the application was for, which I think will have an advantage. Um, Coles have also indicated that they are prepared to, um, beef up security in that area as far as cameras if it's needed. Um, and I think that, um, as councillor Patterson has, has mentioned, if Coles, if we've decided to not crack this application, uh, Coles will take it to VCAT and will be. So I think that with the, uh, conditions that we have on there, I think that, uh, we've done what we can as a responsible authority.
Thank you councillor Jevanetti. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillor Summer?
Uh, yes, I have given this a lot of thought and I am objecting, but I do agree with, um, councillor Patterson and councillor Jevanetti. I actually initially decided that there was no other option, but we had to grant it because it ticked all the boxes. But I think it goes a bit deeper than that. So I am objecting on the grounds of social impact, which is covered under section sixty of the Planning and Environment Act. It was presented to us very clearly that yes, there will be an impact that is social, but it's unlikely to stand up at VCAT. And if it did go to VCAT, perhaps we'd lose a few of these conditions that were placed on the permit. But I'm looking at the permit and I'm thinking they're pretty generic, um, conditions anyway. You probably need them just to get the, um, actual permit to sell the alcohol. The original plans for that corner was green produce, they were going to open up the windows and it was going to be amazing, all healthy, spreading a great message. And it became boxed up and now they want to turn it into a liquor store. So when they're talking about cameras and security if necessary, that does put a bit of a question mark on to what their intentions really will be when the crunch comes. That's been there for four years with blanked up, blanked up boarded up windows. So, alcohol, once the windows are open, strangely enough, they've decided to open them now, they will be visible from the street, alcoholic bottles. Here it says there won't be any advertising on the windows, but there is a question of whether that would be preferable to people seeing the alcohol. It is in close proximity to the bus stop and close proximity to Centrelink. There's an enormous amount of foot traffic and we already have more than enough liquor outlets. Like people can say we have liquor outlets already, so what's the difference? But the fact is, it is proven that there will be a social impact. And at this stage, I don't want to end up overhearing a conversation a couple of years down the line of people saying, why didn't council do something when they could have? Why has this corner turned into such a dive? Um, I want to think that I actually stood up for something that I believed in. And if it goes to VCAT, it sends a very clear message to these Coles planners, the multinationals, that we won't be making it all that easy for them to come in and take advantage. This section sixty of the Planning and Environment Act is a response to council actually writing to them to strengthen section sixty because we know it's inadequate. We know that VCAT basically, they consider what they think is, is significant without actually going into social effects. But it states here that they're intending to bring legislation forward to ensure that appropriate weight is given to communities' concerns, as evidenced by the number of objectors and social impact. So I don't think we should just roll over and let them do this without some kind of a fight. Because, I mean, councils are there to take a stand. And if they're looking at whether or not social impact matters to councils and whether they should be changing legislation, how are they going to know if we don't actually record objections in the council meeting? So it could be money well spent or we may even win.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion?
A very brief comment in respect to, um, aspects of, uh, of social impact. As part of the planning permit application, the applicants were required to undertake a social impact assessment. And in the assessment of the And in the assessment of the application, council then engaged an expert social planning firm to peer review the social impacts of the application. And on both occasions, they were found to be an acceptable outcome.
Thank you for those comments. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Councillor Orsvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Interesting, these type of applications. Because on the one hand, it ticks all the boxes. And effectively, we, what we do is we look at it from a perspective of risk, risk assessment, risk to the council in terms of not approving this application. Because what will happen is we'll, we'll end up at VCAT and VCAT will then dilute, pardon the pun, dilute our conditions. That's all well and good. But the reality is, I think it's important, and I support councillor Summa in this regard, the putting conditions to one side, putting the conditions to one side, I think people need to understand and appreciate that council is concerned about the social impact of alcohol. Concerned about the number of liquor outlets that we have in the community already within the CBD and I was discussing this with councillor Summa. And I think we came up with seven and math was never my strong subject. But that's a lot of liquor outlets within the central business district. The question I pose is do we need more? The question I pose to my fellow councillors, do we need more? That particular location is a location that is popular. And sometimes for all the wrong reasons. I question whether the presence of another alcohol outlet, notwithstanding the conditions that have been sought to be attached to the permit, will really achieve the outcome. But again, I'm only one vote. And it really comes down to a question of how my fellow councillors view this particular application. I don't support it and I don't support it primarily on the basis that notwithstanding the correct permit conditions are being put in place. I note that town planning is not a panacea for all perceived social issues. Nor is planning decision-making a forum for addressing all issues of social community concern. At its heart, planning is about the use, the development and protection of land. And I, I get that, but it still doesn't stop me from registering my disapproval in relation to not supporting this application.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to add any comments for or against?
Um, thank you.
Councillor Keefe?
Um, I actually went up there and had a, I sit around and a look and a walk around the area that's been proposed. Um, I do personally feel that it's not the ideal location for another liquor outlet. Um, I do feel socially, a little bit socially responsible being, being a long-term resident here on my life. You know, you do, you do sit back and hope that you can make some differences. Um, I personally think that it's definitely not the right spot and we definitely don't need another.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Sutton?
Note here, there's only been three, it was, only had three objections lodged. And the objection relate to the location being inappropriate saturation of packaged liquor. And um, the officers engage a social impact expert to assess the application, which finds the application achieves an acceptable planning outcome. So I just, would like just to make that known.
That being said, all councillors have spoken. Councillor Patterson, would you like any closing comments?
I would, I would. Um, there's been three councillors speaking against it and I certainly understand their point. Um, relevant points, but they do not stand up in VCAT. They do not stand up for what the decision is we've got to make. We can't afford to get on our high horse and say people should be able to buy alcohol on the corner of Bourne and Moord Street. Um, there's an application there that we've got to deal with. We can't say there's enough in this area already, that will not stand up in VCAT. They'll laugh at us. It'll cost us seventy thousand dollars for that privilege. If we want to go down a path and, and become involved in trying to suppress the sale of alcohol in Shepherd and, we are made to go down this path that's been seventy thousand dollars of VCAT, we're better off tackling it from another perspective because that's just throwing money away. And what.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, there's new information being introduced without cause for, we don't have a re, a chance for debate.
Was that new information?
Well, all of it.
Thank you for your comments, continue councillor Patterson.
Councillor Summa was concerned about people saying council didn't do anything about it. You know, I'm more concerned about people saying tomorrow, what in the hell have council done? They've just thrown seventy dollars out with the baby in the bath water. It's, it's a waste of money to defend it. If there was another option, yeah, no, you would look at it. But there is no option as far as I'm concerned. That is a hundred percent sure to go through a VCAT planning appeal. I have no doubt whatsoever, there has not been one ground mentioned here tonight that would stand up against it. So I support those councillors of speaking against it as far as we don't necessarily need another alcohol outlet in town. But knocking this back is just a silly way of doing it. We're wasting seventy thousand dollars that rate payers have got to pay, including us, including them.
Indeed, thank you councillor Patterson. Being said, we'll put this to the vote councillors, all in favour? Against? Motion carried.
Division please, Mr Mayor.
All councillors in favour? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Keefe in favour? Councillor Keefe, councillor Adam, councillor Hazel, councillor Gevenetti, councillor Sutton? Against? Councillor Summa and councillor Orsvari. I did say motion carried, did I? Did I not say that? Motion carried, sorry councillors.
Mr Mayor, according to clarification, the next item on the agenda, ten point eight. I understand there's been an alternative motion that's been brought to our attention. And I'd ask for a short recess, five minutes, so that I can consider the, the new motion which has been put by council offices and also consider my position in relation to progressing this motion.
All councillors happy to adjourn for five minutes? In agreement? Well, we'll adjourn the meeting for five minutes and be back. Or we can retire to the council suite if you choose to and we'll have a quick discussion.